Thank you all for your patience. We have, everybody said, well, we're not going to do that yet. We're going to start with the invocation. And Joe, would I be putting you on the spot?
Not at all.
But then we are right?
I'll be more than happy.
Go ahead and stand, everybody, and please remain standing. Please leave this.
Yeah, I agree with you. So we're inclined to have the father. We thank you for the study. It's beautiful that you've given us when understanding maybe ready approaching what we're doing need, but we hope that all are safe during this time. We grant that you give wisdom and guidance in this body to make their best decisions and good health and discussion for this community that they so treasure. Or God them in their deliberations will be with us and bless us and all of our ones that we love. And all those folks need to know you love them. And we ask for this in your son's precious name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll call. We do not have Councilmember Miles here in person today, but I believe she is online. Do you see her online, Lynn? Anybody there? Okay. All right, well, she may join us in a little bit. But she is at home, so she is, she may join us in a little bit. So we'll go ahead and move on from there. I'm going to ask for agenda approval if there is a motion from the council to approve the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda, Mr. President.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any questions from anybody? Questions, questions? No? Okay, all of them, please raise your hands. There's three in favor. And Joe, I'm going to turn over to you, my friend.
So first of all, business, we have a discussion of those business ordinance. And Councilwoman Davis.
Yes. So before we had talked about microphones or hours of those ordinance, and I was defending it because I believe it's important. The reasons I feel like this ordinance is important is because we don't currently have one that requires regular operating hours. It will have a minimal effect on the businesses around it and the businesses within our city. Now, that does not mean that regular business hours are set by the city. It means it would be like businesses that are by appointment only. Obviously, they won't have a regular business hour, but their regular business hours will be listed as by appointment only, like a tax preparer, for example, or a heater processor, or, you know, other things where, you know, it's not a nine to five. However, especially with the building up of our downtown that's coming and the new commercial developments and also commercial spaces that are currently available, we would like to see continuity of businesses being open during regular business hours so that it will help bolster people's ability to access goods and services throughout our city and bolster our invite more commercial to our city. I think that's the purpose and intent of this ordinance.
Joe, didn't you say that Joe was going to have something on this? Was it on this one?
It's not. There's really just a question of how enforcement is going to be official. But that's, I mean, it's my concern.
Enforcement is on section six, which is page three of the document. It just says failure to comply could be grounds for denial, suspension, or revocation of a business license. But they're going to be given a 10-day business, sorry, 10-business-day period to come back into compliance. However, like you said, what are we? Exactly. And that, this is more of an ordinance to say, hey, if you're open in a business here, we expect you to be open and not just be open on certain days. And if you have posted regular business hours, like, for instance, Waffle House has 24 hours a day service, right? So we expect them to be open 24 hours a day. If they're not, they should be assigned to say why they're not open. Agreed? I mean, I think that's a reasonable expectation. At that point, what enforcement would we do? None. We know why they're closed. That's all. There, there are some businesses in other cities that I've noticed that just shudder for no reason, and they're just not open. And it makes the rest of the.
Ghost town.
Yeah, it makes it look like a ghost town. And, you know, they have stuff in there. They're supposed to be open, like, Dollar General has corporate oversight for stuff like that, but mom and pop shops don't. This is a little bit of corporate oversight, quite frankly.
I've got a question. When there are malls, and we're not going to have a mall, but if there's little shopping centers and there's a bunch of stores in there, when the shopping center is created, can't there be like a listing of covenants that says, you know, you need to be open from this time to this time? Haven't I heard about that?
There are, but there's, that's a private matter, not a city matter.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Usually it's developers or the property owners that take that in place. Move, keep rents high because everything's still there, so they're going to be tied up.
Well, is this basically a private matter and not a city matter then, than our ordinance?
No, this isn't necessarily a covenant. It's just, so if, if a business isn't open and we pull this business license and the building is still going to be vacant, nothing to do about it. Can't force it.
But you can when business license comes back up.
Yeah, you can.
But it'll still be empty if they own the building.
Yeah.
What about, okay, let me use an example. And I don't know their situation now, so I'm not picking on them. But at one point, like the nail salon I tried to go to, and there were hours posted, but I had trouble finding them there during those hours. And then even when I would make, try to make an appointment, couldn't get them to answer calls, things like that, is that going to apply there and does it matter?
This is a perfect example for these purposes. At that point, especially being a councilperson, you would call code enforcement, correct? Code enforcement would then begin asking questions. I know that the nail shop often had issues with their landlord keeping electricity and water on. This may be some way that we can assist tenants who own businesses to get the services that they're paying for. This may be a trigger for that.
Would this be more appropriate as a, an agreement that a business owner reviews when they're getting their business license and agrees to?
Maybe it's just a payment for the business license other than an ordinance.
Those lines.
Absolutely, yeah.
I don't know about the legality of that.
Yeah. I don't either.
You're more adopting a policy or you set up rules for your application.
Yeah.
For business licenses.
And that, you can make the very clear expectation of, as a business in the city, we want to help you grow and promote, you know, promote your growth. And these are the expectations that you, you are in business and that you do post your office hours. And, and really, it's just a courtesy to their customers.
Right.
And, yeah, okay. And are you comfortable with, I mean, I know you always listen, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. I, I think the applicability as far as an agreement between business license applicant and the city is probably appropriate. Especially with the caveat that it's truly unenforceable. But it would be.
But would it be enforceable more or less in the same way that they have maintained their agreement to go to the business license? So city can step in and.
Or not renew the application.
Yeah. And we can also let the business that's coming into the city or here, let them know what we agreed to do.
Right.
As a city, to, you know, make it beautiful and make it a place where people will come.
Okay.
So we can have a mutual agreement between us.
How about I rewrite this to include some of those items?
In section two, item two, it refers to four days per week open to the public unless otherwise approved. So that would mean that any business that's not planning to be open four hours or that's going to be appointment only has to come to us before the business license is approved.
That just says not less than four days per week unless otherwise approved by the city. And that's, if we were going to adopt that, it would become part of the agreement with the business license. So, I mean, I don't think that a business is going to be, going to want to be open less than four days a week.
Well, essentially, what I read there is, from a legal standpoint, and I'm certainly not an attorney, that if you've got a business that's going to say, it's appointment only.
Right.
Then they're hitting that less than four hours per week. So we have to, as council, approve that that's okay for, before it's four days.
Am I reading that correctly? It just says unless otherwise approved by the city. So that would mean the process through which they're applying for their license? And license application, that's how I interpret.
I would, what if you, on the application, you just made them describe their business hours generally?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that and not set.
All right. So when it says approved by the city, does that mean city administration? Does that mean city council?
It's however, the business license are approved now, if anything.
Could I make a suggestion? As a city administrator, you're responsible for policies and procedures. And this would be one of those things that we would amend the business license. And I know you don't do anything without researching it. And I've had faith, this is something that you, if Rachel's interested in working with you or other councilmember's suggestions, they can go ahead and do that. But as policymaker or S O P S, I'd say we leave this to Joe. And if anybody has any suggestions or comments or questions, we go ahead and let Joe know. And he will do the research on it and make it just part of the business license. Does that work for everybody?
Yes, yes. I would absolutely love to work with you in any capacity.
And there's not any fines or anything in between? Just go straight to, we can revoke.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go on.
I think an agreement is even much.
I do too.
More gentler way of saying, hey, we have expectations.
Yeah.
And you have expectations of us. So.
From a related room, you know, it's working out.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Is there any other comments in that one? Okay. All right. But that's not going to be on the agenda for the council meeting. That's going to just be something that Joe will handle, okay? All right. I'm going to turn the air down a little bit, guys in here. If you don't mind, nobody's breathing. Excuse me, just put a minute. Have it turned down and not breathing, so it's turned off.
Maybe you went too far.
Is that 73 now? Well, it wasn't 75. So, okay, all right. Pardon me for doing that. But then the lights are bright up here. Okay. Joe, next to you.
Next, proposed limits for rental properties for term leases. So on this one. So this hasn't changed since last time we spoke in our last meeting session. However, what we did before that was we made sure it aligned with state requirements. So the context of this ordinance is mostly us showing that we agree and will enforce the state requirements on rental properties. And this was proposed by Councilwoman Davis, if you'd like to skip.
Um, you can, I'm fine.
But as we spoke about last, this is mostly to give tenants and even owned and run properties and resources to the city. So if, say, a owner of rental properties shutting off the water, not getting things fixed, they can come to the city for our ability to investigate and put a little bit of state compliance pressure on that owner of the rental property. That's the biggest thing I take from it. To protect health, safety, and welfare as it shows on the cover page. And then to provide sanitary conditions, preserve neighborhood property values and community standards, and have consistent rules for those tenants. The original proposal did talk about having contact information, but that falls too closely to having to register, which is not allowed in city.
Okay, I have a question. Like, on inspections, just give a scenario that I don't even know if it exists here. You've got a property that's rented now, and that property is maybe one of our habitual offenders for not keeping the property up. Does this address, if it's the tenant doing it or the lender, does that help in that case in any way?
In that scenario, this wouldn't really be this ordinance. That would mostly fall with our nuisance properties, code enforcement violations.
Which would go to the owner, not the tenant.
You go ahead either.
Because the direct responsibility of key, like, law names, things of that nature, is the tenant in most part. But if they're not doing it, then we can go for the owner, notifying them. And a lot of times, it gets corrected in that aspect. And that's what we're trying to take out with some of the tenant relationships. I'd say a good example of where investigation piece of this would be, say, a tenant had a pipe burst in their home. And it's been three leads, nothing, it's been three explorers, so shut off. The tenant can invoice and seal. And then we can contact the property owner later.
Just cuts a little more authority about doing complaints when it's warranted. Tenant complaints, even landlord complaints for that matter, because it's not just protecting, it could also be for landlords having issues getting their tenant to maintain the line or have the water service turned on. Just helps both, it helps both. And it's our city looking nice.
Will we not become mediators between the tenant and the landowner if we do this?
It would ruin it.
Because between the tenant and landowner, most times there's a lease, which is a legal document. And with the lease, the tenant had, the tenant and the landlord both has an advocate in the courts. So basically, to me, it's, it's like evictions. It's got nothing to do with city business. Until the, somebody's possessions is put on the side of the road and nobody picks it up. It might be a city issue, but between the tenant and the landlord and the courts, why are we stepping in?
I, I think what we're trying to show here is, so as a kid, I've been a tenant. And we've been in these situations. It shows that you're not alone, that someone's going to advocate for you. I think we're mostly talking about issues that come down to habitability and not simple things like my microwave's off. But when it comes down to habitability, we do have an interest in our citizens being safe.
Yeah. I see it from both perspectives, having been a landlord and having had tenants that were terrible and tenants that were great. And I hope that I was a good landlord. And it, it sort of protects both. Because if the landlord is having an issue with their tenant, they can look to these things and say, can you provide any help as well as the tenant can come? And we're sticking with it, what the state law says can and can't be done. But it gives them a more local reach out than having to get an attorney and go to file a lawsuit or something. And, because I don't think there's really a whole lot we can do other than just give advice as to what their next move is.
Exactly. And then you heard a few things, enforcement laws beyond.
Do you know that the city has adopted, if I reference, the International Property Maintenance?
No. I don't believe so.
Based on that, based on that big book?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Some of that, some of this might be covered in there. It might be worth looking at that quote first.
Yeah.
What was, what's that called?
International Property Maintenance, but basically every city has adopted it.
We adopted that when we did the last ordinance change on, no, just with the, with our code enforcement officer's suggestion about the additional things about property maintenance, about grass night, about outdoor storage, and about some of those other things, treaties, all that. It was adopted in that. And we have.
But that, but that, that covers a lot of this stuff. And so there may be something in there for code enforcement to do.
Would you all like, do you want to look into that information? See if it includes this information?
Yes, and if it already does, we definitely, if it does, we'll, we will notify you and let you know that. If it doesn't, then go ahead.
Because I'm fine with your recommendation, either put it on the next council meeting, the council meeting comes up, or table it and have a future discussion.
Absolutely. That works. So do we need to annotate that it's being tabled or?
No, this is just a matter of fact. I don't think so. All right. Joe.
Next, we have stormwater discussion. So as we spoke about last meeting session, most cities, if not all of our surrounding areas, we have a stormwater on the, there's different ways to go about that, that rate. And honestly, it's due by, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've seen a lot of new, a more of a aggregate rate for residential and then permanent ability for commercial. The end of those weeks, we'll have a lot of help with our city engineer. We do have a meeting with him on Monday to speak about some of this stuff. He's scheduled that this morning. So a lot of information on this is going to come down to that meeting.
So we need to table it until the next meeting session, right?
I would recommend that. Just love, love more information how we would go about that.
I have to give a, if it may help on that.
Joe.
Well, I didn't, I did a little bit of digging because there's a lot of communities looking at this. But I think meeting with your engineer would, they're widely will help. Because what's just for y'all to think about as policymakers is you need to, you're going to have to do an assessment first of, of what you have in nature. And then there's a lot of different ways the assessment can look at the different options you have for calculating the fees that Joe mentioned. And there's a couple of different options. There's E R U's, there's suburban surplus. But in order to, to do those, you have to know what you have. So I, what, to a large degree purposes, if you're, if you're going to sort of move forward in that discussion, it's just to have, think about if you're going to have to give, if he probably can provide that as a people to do those assessments to look at sort of setting. Because it's like any other charge to be defensible. You can't arbitrarily charge a rent. And then it's also tied to your project list to try to calculate your, and to be able to show people what you're going to do with the funds that you, because people are going to try to not pay them if they could avoid it. I mean, the good thing about stormwater utility is it also, it impacts everybody. So exempt properties from normal property taxation, or depending on how you structure your ordinance, have to pay. So that'll be, that's a political tussle you may have. But, but they also, they also affect your stormwater nature. But the reasoning on trying to do that with the agents, the parks, and this community is others, it makes sense because they're all getting propped and they're all, and it's been defensible in court. Griffin and another community were the first ones to do it in the state. And they, they were successful in implementing it. And they had to defend it in court several times, but it's not a tax.
That's, that's the key.
So when y'all go about it, and, I mean, I would speak with the engineer about getting him to give you an idea of, has he done it before, his approach on setting up the, the assessment? Because there's a lot of, and the cool thing is, there's a lot of resources on the, on the web that you can get. The Center for Worship Protection has done a lot of that work, so that, there's some resources there. But, and then you have to have, once you go through all that, you just need to have a utility ordinance, storm utility ordinance adopted that sets the parameters for you and that gives you the right to change your phases. Loganville, I pulled Loganville, I pulled Brazelton's, I mean, there's a lot of those out there, but I know that Loganville was mentioned, but they went through a similar assessment. So just keep that in mind when you go is that the, I don't think it would be in your best interest to set fees and then go because people are going to come like, hey, how did you come up with this?
Absolutely.
We were sitting around the table and just figured that was a good price. Because, yeah, because then you'll have to, because part of it is, when we start doing plan reviews, future plan reviews, you'll need that information provided, the change in it to go into the calculating fees.
Yeah, you're, no, you're absolutely right. And we've already had that preliminary discussion with Aaron Wong.
Well, good, yeah, I just.
And then, but know about where there are issues within the city. So we will also talk with him about different ways of assessing what those fees.
Because in like a, an impact fee study or capacity recovery fee that we have in my community, they went through, we did this work, and then we determined project list. And then that was sort of a matrix for figuring out the proportional share. Well, in this case, you would know what your, your, your serious issues are, and you have a cost for that, which they could help. And then that helps you with your new projects as well as operations and maintenance. Because that's where we're all going to run the same thing that's going and fixed. Like Mr. Schultz has, I, others will be fixing those forever.
Yeah. Joe, you said, you said the two words I was just thinking of for your question. You said impact fees. What's the difference in calling this a stormwater utility and charging an impact fee?
Well, the impact fee is based upon the impact of a new development on the existing.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure. So it's, it has to be calculated as the proportional share of one of Mr. Rutledge's development comes in, for instance.
Right.
If there were impact fees that were in place, then that'd be, they would pay their proportional share of the, of their impact on it.
Right.
And then it had, but the impact fees have to be, they're, they're governed by different sections of state law. And you have to do, and every year you have to do certain things. But it does also generate money for capital projects.
Right.
Police, fires, schools, however it's allocated by, this, this is a user, almost a user fee, which is a little bit easier to.
Yeah.
Well, that to administer too, because you're impacted in the stormwater system. Water Grove asks, where, we have an A P D S permit, we have to maintain water quality. They're coming in to help, this will help. And it's not a tax. How do you bill it is up to you all, is what's the best method for you? And then in the use of the studies, I read one on the city of Fayetteville, went through this same thing about 15 years ago. And they, their assessment went through about four different options. And I can send some of this to Joe for him to know. But it talked about, they decided, you know, that the consultant suggested these ways. But the main thing is, it's different because we're, you're, you're not, there is, there's not really, new development will have to, they won't pay an upfront charge, they'll do their work. But what we're doing is, they would pay into a pot for when their detention bond structure for downstream needs to be corrected. Because they're not going to, that will be impact stormwater on the front end, but they're also doing, they're also improving, should be, by maybe, you know, the, your other regulations. So the main thing is to getting the, using this to get that wort, or chest kitty to be able to fix 40-year-old undersized pipes.
Yeah.
And it can, depending on how your ordinance is, it can apply to, you know, the existing end. You know, because as soon as that pipe goes to the ground, it has a life cycle.
Right. And it starts.
And so the ones that y'all are facing now, McDonald's Springs, Eagle Cove, all those are just there. They need, and there's all the different approaches you can take, but this fee would help. As you all talked about, I'm sure it'll offset the cost there. You just want to, impact fees carry a certain, that's, that's a little bit more. You can charge administrative costs to administer, that's, I don't know if we're, if you're quite ready to jump down that slope yet, but this would be one way to kind of get you used to it. Because there is an administrative burden to this as far as account, accounting and then allocation of costs. and then allocation of costs. But it's nothing different than like ARCA funds where you have to keep it, keep track of it. You have to be able to show that you're, you get Fred's contract to come out here where you're paying for it out of that pot of money.
Right.
And that pot of money was generated through, and a lot of folks like Griffin, they'll go and put a sign up so that this was paid for out of stormwater, you know.
Yeah.
We're protecting the water shift, so they're, they're kind of.
And doing those stormwater fees also too, it would have less than, if we did the assessment and put that into place, it would have less of an impact on our citizens. Whereas if we don't do something and a couple of years down the road, we need to raise taxes because we don't have those extra funds to be able to repair things. It's a, it's like a savings account for big projects, so you can do it like.
Specific for this infusion, and where you could flow the bond, in which case it would come off of all the taxpayers. I mean, it's, and people, well, they're not gonna be happy having to pay any fees. But this is a, and it's, some of the, it's very much like 50 bucks a year. I mean, it's not a, the, I mean, the thing about doing this assessment is it, it shows people if they come to question, well, how'd you come up with this number? Here's our, here's our, we met with our consultant, they came up with this, and here's what we agreed upon. And then we will evaluate as we do projects. Because it, you know, as you all know, that project in the, in the, you know, started at this price and ended up being this because of things that were found. So it just helps you get that, with one another source. And you can also with this, with these fees, you can use it to leverage CBPG, other sources as well. SLOST, you can use a combination of that to help, to help, to make, to help make the project happen. That's why we have to get creative small towns to, is to leverage our, layer our funding. So that was just my thoughts, and you're welcome.
Appreciate that, it's true. Okay, so that will not be on the council meeting. Next, in two weeks. Speed detection sign. And I know that this.
Did you have comments?
From an administrative side, personal water, I just wanted to clarify that this isn't a quick project. With all the surveys, make sure we calculate it correctly. And on top of all that, make sure we align our budget correctly.
Yeah.
Because we have to make sure those funds are allocated directly to that. So the easiest way to do that is just make sure we align all those timeframes together, which makes it where we can't make a quick decision on that immediately, just right off the bat.
Do you perceive that this is something that can be done for our next budget year?
Absolutely.
Right, that's what I'm hoping. Okay. Thank you, Joe. And of course, speed detection signs, and Erica is, I don't know if you know who else is the one that brought this for. And we recently had a fatality in the city of Walton Road. It wasn't based on speeding, now that the report has shown exactly what happened with the vehicles. It was just somebody not paying attention. And pulling out into traffic, which caused a three-vehicle incident. And so I'm gonna open up, if anybody has any comments about.
I do.
The radar signs.
I do, the first thing I want is to caution us as council that we're not reactive in these situations where we're being reactive to a recent event or reactive to suddenly seeing it in our neighborhood and haven't had things going on prior to. Especially in light of the fact that, to my knowledge, this was not put in the budget in any way. And I would, I would be, my first question would be, where are we getting the money? If we're going to do this, and do we really think that it's going to create the effect that we're looking for?
That's my question, the effectiveness, because we go down the road and we see it, we slow down, we see what we're doing, and then we go back to our business again.
That's exactly what every report said.
And doesn't, and looking at this, it pretty much backs up what I'm saying. They're not a debt, if they were, the city, not the city, but the county and the state of the trouble have them out on every road.
That's correct.
And they barely have any of the shares.
That's correct.
Much less depend on them, and they're not enforceable.
This, this label that I gave it out, it, it really weighs the different, and these are just ideas. These are just different ways that we can help mitigate and slow down calls and some of that traffic. That was a word that was, that I kept seeing over and over again, traffic calming, calm the traffic. One of my favorites that I saw was, and you guys are gonna think I'm crazy, but just hear me out. Enhanced signage warnings, and then said something about vegetation and sideline clearing and maintenance. And then I thought, what if we had different civic groups sponsor?
And, she was changing.
Sorry.
I was looking at something for you, sorry. This is all right. Oh, sorry.
What if we had different civic groups sponsor a beautiful natural planter to go at the bottom of a speed limit sign? And we can partner with DOT and ask them for a new speed limit sign. This would be something that would be free, that would benefit our community, it would beautify our community, and it would bring attention to a speed limit sign, because people are gonna see these flowers or whatever they decide to put in this box. And it would need to be natural materials for outdoors. But this is just an idea I had after reading all of this stuff, and I was going, what could we do that would engage our community that would be beneficial and that would not cost us money to bring awareness of the fact that they are entering into the city limits of Walnut Grove? And they need to slow down, they need to calm down, they need to take time and smell the roses, the proverbial and literal roses.
That's, that I agree with everything that you all have said. I agree that this was not in our budget.
Yeah.
I do agree that there is a traffic issue, not only in Walnut Grove, but in Walton County and everywhere else. Joe recommended it to be called Traffic. And I started reading, listening, listening to it yesterday. And you all, some of you may be too young to remember this, but Walt Disney put out a, a cartoon of Goofy. He'll say, "Not be go lucky guy, just walking around pleasant, hello, everybody, have a wonderful day." And the moment he got in his vehicle, he turned into a traffic monster. And when you think about it, you get in that vehicle and you feel as though, or some people, and perhaps I have in the past, feel as though we are invincible. And we have the right, why is that person going so slow? God, why don't they know how to drive? We've all said these things. And Goofy turns into a traffic monster. You turn into something, and there's many reports on this, that were alluded to in this book that I'm listening to, that we are not ourselves all the time when we're in our vehicles. And so the idea of, hey, you've just entered the city of Walnut Grove, and there's a difference when you get here. Bringing stuff like that to their attention. Some more signage, why not? Work through the schools. And it's a bigger issue, it's not just on this park street.
No.
Unfortunately, when that sign was out here and the report we got back, Erica got for us from Walton County Sheriff's Office, they set the speed timer or the limit at 60 miles an hour. It's 25 out there, isn't it 25? So I'm gonna talk to Sheriff Brooks, I'm gonna say, could we set it at 36? And then really see who, how fast people are going. Because it said at 60, they only had two superspeeders going faster than that. And I don't think that's a realistic view. But if we, if, this is also something I think that we need to sit down and really look at and come up with a plan. We need to look at our neighborhoods like we've discussed before. We need to look at county roads surrounding us over on Old 138 and Guthrie Cemetery. There is a intersection where there's just two stop signs, there should be four stop signs. And that should be something that can slow people down, because there's been accidents there. I look back at the Walton Tribune today and the number of accidents on fatalities in Walnut Grove and around Walnut Grove. It's ridiculous. I mean, I know it's, it's life, but we've gotta do something. And just getting signs like this and spending $6,000 or $9,000 and then having an administrative strain to not only move these signs, to look at the reports, to assess the reports, maintain the signs, it just, to me, it would be a stopgap measure. And it wouldn't be addressing the whole issue.
Well, I'm gonna have such a wonderful relationship, thankfully, with our Walton County sheriffs.
Absolutely.
And, and the deputies can come out and help us with these, especially for spot studies. And I, and I think it is warranted, I really like your idea to again, to reset that max, that speed limit down to 36. Because that's, what, 11, 12?
I've been told that they can't give a ticket unless it's at least over 10 miles per hour. What, Joe?
I'm sorry, it's a little risky rule.
Well, the speed trap city, I know that, I heard that.
You know, actually, I'm about ready to be known as a speed trap city.
Yes.
And put up signs, you know, if we have to pay on private property, get private residents to say, you know, beware of the speed trap. If that's what it takes to slow people down and get them paying attention.
Or, you know, come up with a slogan or something. Something, coming up with something that, that would care about our citizens. We've gotta get something done, let's get our citizens behind us. And if somebody gets a ticket in this town, it's because they don't live here and they don't realize, you're not, that's not acceptable.
I, I think something, all, all four city limit signs coming into town have a welcome to Walnut Grove. We don't abide by speeders here or something, you know, some slogan.
Just slow down and look around.
Yeah, right.
Slow down, you can't enjoy our city.
The, yesterday, I was driving my daughter to an appointment in Loganville, and I took a left off the 81 into the Twins Lake subdivision and development they have back there. And I was struck by housing of these bright yellow signs that I saw approaching around and leaving their playground areas. You know, as moms, small kids, I'm constantly aware of where the playgrounds are and the traffic that comes with it. It's a big road, it's well paved, it's well lit, and people can fly down that road. Speed limit 35 with these little bright orange and yellow signs that said, "Slow down, children at play." I don't think that's a bad idea either.
We have one of those on our street.
Yep.
But, yeah.
So we, we have no trucks on our street, but that doesn't stop them from.
We got trucks.
Turning around on the outlet.
That's another enforcement issue, because our, our government, I can't write tickets.
Right.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, but the, like with the, right, a couple of days ago.
Yeah.
Everybody wanted to go in that direction, they end up turning into our neighborhood to turn around to go back, that sort of thing.
I did the same thing at your neighborhood, it's true.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, our sheriff's department, they were on it. They were at the parkway, they were redirecting the traffic, trying to be respectful of what had just happened. And I'm very thankful for it. Very thankful. If you all are in agreement, or if you would be okay with this, let's go ahead and, and look further at this. And when I say that, I'm interested in this very a lot. I told my son yesterday, he drove to Delonica three times before he left, please be careful, please be careful, please be careful. Slow down, if he takes a split second. And I don't want the citizens in Walnut Grove or anybody else having this kind of situation on our streets. So if anybody else is interested in working with me along with Joe, then please let me know, and we will go ahead and table this until we can come back with some information and talk from DOT, we can talk from the sheriff's department, and some research and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I would much rather see what are other alternatives that are likely to be more effective.
Yeah, and make this a, for the next budget series also, to make sure we have the funding available, to do what we need to do. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, that's what we'll do. Yeah, just whittling down that next council meeting. We'll cut out some of that for the period, right? I'm sure Joe, we're happy to do that. Okay. Thank you all. Joe, do you have anything to add?
I think I'll cut it out.
Okay, all right. Let's move on to new business.
So new business first is a discussion with sidewalk installation waiting request for aluminum truck sales at 47 Guthrie Cemetery Road. And they are present.
And you share with us a little bit about the reinforced research you did about what is required of council and meetings and whatnot like that.
Right, so I talked with Mr. Walter about, because it was new via why we need a public hearing or formal process for variance. And he probably speaking a little bit later than me.
Well, next council, the sidewalks are covered under the land development ordinance. And in section 904, as it's currently constructed, it just says that a waiver or modification be granted by council. And that this is, that's as much information as there is. It's not a zoning action, I mean, Jay could concur. It's not a change of use or intensity, it's a technical request that your, your code currently requires sidewalks to be placed certain distance from a school, which is what is, because the proximity of this property and to maximum RX, their distance from the high school, that's why this was triggered. And it's like, so that was why there's not a hearing required as much as they, they have requested relief from this requirement. And because it's a policy issue, that's why it comes for you all to decide whether or not you want to grant it or not, or have a discussion about alternative compliance. Much like, but it's, it's not a, you know, it's not intensity or change, it's not, this isn't gonna, if it's there, it's great, it's not. I mean, there's reasons why, and I know Maxine had done some discussions and sent some information, but.
Yeah.
And so what we did is we asked the engineer to submit a waiver request, it says we don't have a form. They sent a letter and we included that in your packet as to their, it is essentially the same letter that was submitted for maximum credit. So, you know, from a, and I think it was a very good discussion at the last work session about, about the, you know, whether or not sidewalks, since there are sidewalks on the other side of Guthrie Cemetery Road would be here, and I know in the case of the print, the other applicant, there were some grading and other issues that they brought to your attention that would affect the stormwater management. So, you know, I think it boils down to you all asking some questions of the, about the why, then, you know, what's, what's our, what's your end game policy wise on sidewalks? And if it comes down to, this happens, and you all may want to consider looking at your, that part of the ordinance, which is a section 408, which is sidewalks, and maybe making some modifications to it. Because those need tweaking, to be honest with you, those were, those regulations were adapted in Walton County's back in 2007. I assisted you all with that, so I mean, they probably need, may need some adjustment.
Well, of course they do, Joe.
This is not just a shameless plug to get to work, but. You know, Spike would help you with it. But we, you know, we, we, they do, because, you know, Walton County's probably changed their requirements. You want to, you don't want to necessarily match it, but.
Right.
And goes back to your previous discussion about speed. Just quickly, most of those, a lot of those things at the table on your local streets, you have a whole lot more say so on sidewalks and, and traffic calming than what on DOT is gonna do with DOT does.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's, that's, that may be something for that discussion, my traffic calming, they probably do need their corporate help.
Yes.
So I mean, I'll answer any specific questions. We, we simply, we, we asked them to provide it since the ordinance requires it, and they have asked, they're asking for you all to waive it because of the reasons they stated in their letter about traffic. And the same, so, I mean.
Okay.
From a technical standpoint, we're okay with whatever the council decides.
Yeah. Everybody saw what Maxine had shared with us, the suggested location of sidewalks, about the green.
Yeah, I, I think in the case of this, this particular situation, it's maybe a little different than was in mind when everything was written up.
Right.
And being as, most of those businesses are industrial, that don't warrant foot trend, and probably never will in that. and probably never will in that area. Even to discourage foot traffic would be the better option.
I agree.
For both the businesses and the students. But to provide good access from that side, I think coming out from the parking lot, I did notice, you know, people wanting to go and walk toward Park Street area. Providing better for them would be the better answer. Yes, that falls to us and our expenses, which may or may not be in the budget for this year. But.
Isn't that property the school? Isn't that property the school or is that the, I mean, I don't know. Is there?
I've spoken with the superintendent.
Yeah.
And we can talk with him right now. See if we can work together within the next budget year. And I also know PPI has shared with us that they work with some of the students at the school doing engineering work, which would, this would need a little bit of engineering, that if we can partner together with everybody.
We had done preliminary cost assessment for Mayor Walrath on essentially this same project, but we also had to go down the time in the sidewalk and the roundabout.
Yes.
Those numbers can be refreshed if you need it. And then, you know, but we just, and I think he was trying to do all the coordination where it kind of got slowed down, but it was.
Now, and that's when the school put in the crosswalk there at the roundabout.
From my understanding, is that particular crosswalk, maybe it's not as safe as we'd like just because of being at the roundabout. And so the kids going down Park Street in the other direction, if they could cross earlier, maybe or at the other side of the parking lot might be better for them.
Or the awareness that there are two crosswalks now and they slow people down even more.
Right.
Yeah. So we can talk with PPI and the school and us and figure out what this project would cost and put in any capital improvement or projects for next year and see if we can get this going.
And I would say, yeah, I would say if this location is shown, you're going to have to budget for some additional signage and maybe some flashers because that's not a controlled intersection.
Right.
So people are even less likely to pay attention and there's not a.
Perhaps actually, put in some real medians.
Or there's a lot of ways to do that traffic comp because especially, especially at the school, you want people to slow down.
Right.
Is, and you want the people who are there to not speed out like they do at most schools.
Right.
As soon as they're approved, just don't go away, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, yesterday, the buses coming out, I was like, whoa.
Let's get back on topics about sidewalks and the, the requests.
Yeah.
Is everybody prepared to have this put on the council meeting?
I am.
Yeah. Okay. So we will do that. We will, does anybody have any questions or anything of the property owner, the business owner at this time? Because they are here.
No, and, and from my standpoint, I don't need them at the next meeting because I'm comfortable with where I sit alone.
Okay.
I mean, it's certainly up to them and their preference to be here if they do.
Okay. So the next meeting will be on October 2nd. And that's when we will have this, is it October 2nd?
The 9th.
I thought.
Now, we moved.
Yeah. We moved because of the fall break. So it's October 2nd.
Yes.
So that point will be, if you, it's at 6, 6, 6 o'clock at night.
Yep.
That's somebody changing. If you guys, if you would like to be there, you are always welcome to come. If you feel comfortable not being here based on discussions today, that is your choice also. Okay. But you will be notified definitely the next day. Okay. Thank you all for being here today. Okay. So then that will go on. Okay. Think about, or about, yes. Okay. The last one is really more of an informational, wanted to let you all know that our municipal court judge, Sam Bar, he has two partners who would fill in for him when he had to be absent from sitting on the court. He, they are going to be retiring. He has other.
Both of them?
Both of them.
They are retiring.
And, but he has others who are in his firm, who he has recommended to the city. And we spoke with Jay and Tony and we are going to be bringing them to the next meeting to have them sworn in to be able to serve how many municipal courts in the city. And that's the basics of it.
And they just, you all share a judgment of social circle. They get to the same thing.
Yes. Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's, it's so few judges, if Judge Bart's out of town or sick or something, that you all have to miss a whole lot of support.
We have to approve them because we approved the firm that's providing.
Yeah.
But it's, it's always nice to just go ahead and swear in your benefits because eventually you're going to get some person that thinks they're smarter than everybody and has to add to this. And you don't want to have that, but.
So, yes. Yeah. So they will be here at the council meeting on the 2nd to be sworn in. Okay. I will forward you all an email I got from Judge Bart with their names of the appointees. Just so you have them. Okay?
It's impactful.
Is there anything else anybody wants to bring?
I've got some that, that might need to go on the next council meeting. But I'm still trying to get another, another lady to agree.
Okay.
Library trustees for our local board. We have three openings. And we have three, we've got two for sure and one that's still in the menu.
Okay.
But I may have them ready to bring before council.
Okay.
To their names.
Okay. Their names for approval.
Whether I get them here or not, I'll know, but I will try.
What is it? Is there an, in, and that's?
It just has to be approved through mayor and council.
Okay.
Okay. Our trustees.
Okay. Great. Okay.
No.
Is, is that an annual process? Because I don't think I've ever.
No, we don't, no. Well, it's not an actual vote. It's just the, it's like the judges, it's where I believe council mayor just needs to be aware of who your trustees are.
Okay.
Or if you do have an issue with one of them, it's certainly a good time to bring it up, but.
Maybe not at the meeting, but. But.
Yeah, put the names ahead of time.
I know there is a process. So why don't you?
Yeah.
Definitely talk with Joe and he'll get that going.
I don't know that process that they do because I went on as a trustee, I believe, two years ago. But my appointment then expired 2029. So I don't know what.
I think that the people that really appointed, if I'm not wrong, Ms. Linda, is the regional libraries. But they, but they.
But they come here to.
They have any knowledge.
Yeah, acknowledge.
And we thank them for their service.
Yeah.
So Joe, you'll handle that with, with him, right? I know you can talk about that too.
So our ordinance does say that approval is by council mayor. I have to look at the IGA to make sure that's exactly how it's set up contractually with library.
Okay. All right. Great. Okay. Well, since we don't need reports, we don't really need comments today because that is for council meetings.
I do have a comment.
Oh.
Friends of the, friends of the library is having our penning Tuesday, Saturday. They're sponsoring it.
What time?
11, 11 to 1. I'll be there. And it's a fundraiser. We're selling hot dogs. I know everybody's not friends. But everybody likes to pen a little baby goat, so.
All right.
At the library.
I need to bring Carol in.
All right, you guys, go ahead.
One tiny comment, go Warriors. We are, we are now county champs at the middle school level and we are county champs at the high school level. So proud of our Warrior football teams.
I had a very big grin on my face yesterday when we went to lunch with the mayors. And Monroe brought up, John Howard from Monroe brought up, how's everybody's football team doing? I just sat there and grinned. We're doing great for the champs.
You should have made John and Skip wear a green Walnut Grove Warriors jersey.
Really sweaty, green. Yeah, right.
Oh, and Mayor Keener.
Ms. Maxine, you have anything?
Enjoyed going to the sheriff's ribbon cutting. It was really nice. I actually was one of the last ones to leave. I sat there and talked with the highway patrol and the sheriff guys and different people and just thoroughly enjoyed it.
And the Black Hole dedication was totally awesome. It was.
Very busy couple of weeks. We were at the award ceremony for the elementary school and the high school for their awards from the state on literacy and in mathematics too. And that was really nice. The, the state superintendent came out and gave us the words. So we're all doing pretty good.
Another great.
We're like grandma.
It's like grandma's character. But our Lions Club here in Walnut Grove, we had to dissolve the club sometime last year, I believe. I lose count. But we didn't have enough members to call the clubs. We joined in with Oxford because they're right next door. Our Oxford Lions Club and Covington Lions joined together on a project with the schools. Every school in Newton County, we tested eyes for all first, third, and sixth graders. And we also have an agreement with American, America's Best. That'll help the kids get glasses if they need them. Further examined glasses.
I want to give a shout out to a former Walnut Grove High School student. She was either the first graduating class or the second. I don't recall. But I want to just kind of praise what Walnut Grove puts out from their high school. This young woman, Raven Harris, graduated and went four years on a full scholarship to Cornell. And then she moved on to Duke University on scholarship and she is now a surgeon, doctor, physician. So, and that came out of Walnut Grove High School. And she debated between going into drama and being a doctor. So she's a very talented young woman. So I kept up with her. We brought her to council as like a student of the month or student of the year that are last year in school. So.
I think we could all go on and on and on about how great Walnut Grove is and how proud we are of the things that are happening here. But we're not going to hold everybody up all day long, but you've heard a few things. We appreciate you all being here. And on that note, who made the move?
Rachel.
Rachel.
And second, Maxine?
Yes.
All in favor? Raise your hands. All right. Thank you all for being here.